We'll link back to things in yesterday's meeting. We'll ask Jeffrey for some input on it and then we'll decide if we can make a policy decision or not. I predict that in some cases, we're not going to be able to sit here today with the information we have and set a policy going forward. But I think if we could just create some guidance, some steer, some basic principles, underlying principles upon which in the future, we're going to make decisions, I think that would be a great outcome of this meeting.
Yeah, I'm sure we could find some good ideas for drafting those policies and start from there.
And I think it's going to be an ongoing, it's going to be an ongoing process. I think maybe for the next several months or six months or whatever at every county council meeting, I expect that we're going to have the sewer system on our agenda and may just be for status report. But I think more than likely, it's going to be make some more decisions to provide our engineers with more guidance and in order to, you know, kind of reach out into the community and determine what's really best, within the best interest of our citizens. And I think that's important. The other aspect of this is that we, our system does extend into another jurisdiction. I mean, we serve another jurisdiction and that's Chimney Rock Village. And so, you know, I feel like we work very closely with the village. We collaborate and partner with them on many things. We kind of view the gorge as a, as a continuous community and going forward, I think it would be in everyone's best interest to work closely with their town leaders and in terms of us setting policy that affects them, them setting policy that affects our system. And so going forward, I would just propose that we will very quickly have some kind of a get together or a discussion with them. John?
I'll comment on that. I spoke briefly to Jeffrey. I just, from all I heard yesterday and hearing that the county owns that system, or I guess the county has responsibility for that system, best we can tell, but we can't really tell. So I think one thing we need to consider on that is some direction from the state on, you know, the status of the system that's there now and how it is with the, with the collection pipes that, you know, come down in the river. Maybe they're maybe part of it, I'm not sure that they're basically part in the river, but it runs down the riverbank exposed on piers. So I think those are some things that, some policy that would include Chimney Rock and, you know, they, they really have no ownership of that system other than the private individuals and business owners having this, their supply lines. So I think that's a critical, you know, issue that we're going to have to establish some way, whether it's with the county or whatever.
Along those three lines, and this is probably more of a legal thing, but could ETJ be used and can it be selective for just maintenance and management and control and ownership of the sewer line? I mean, with regard to somebody like Chimney Rock, which is outside our jurisdiction. So I'm going to just follow that up.
Well, we could have any sort of general agreement.
Without doing ETJ?
Correct.
Right, okay.
See, they don't own it. You weren't here yesterday. Chimney Rock does not own the part of their system that's up there. The county took ownership of it, as we're typically think, but there's no, they have, also have no permit for discharge. They come right into our system, so that, that's, that's an issue too.
All the property owners own from the main line or the course line, main line to the properties, but the county owns the main line.
Another thing Kevin and I thought of last night is, you know, we've talked about Chimney Rock, we've talked about Roman Ball, we have not discussed Lake Ondo Resort. You know, they have a community, community collection system that all comes together down there at their, at their ramp and their beach. I'm not sure if it goes, if any of it goes in the lake or if it goes to the lake to the manhole, I'm just not sure. If that's another thing we've got to address that we've not talked about, then the committee has not talked about that either.
All right, yep, that's the first time I've...
That's also Kevin, area that we brought up that had a small six unit pressure, low pressure system that existed at the same point.
Although they're outside that building.
Yeah, they're, they're... Yeah, that's on Bark Ridge Road.
Yeah, which is outside the building. And there may be others along the way.
I think it would, I think it was, if it wasn't before, it certainly was as a result of the discussion we had yesterday, blatantly obvious that, that we have an exceptionally complicated system.
Come out, come out, look into these, walk those lines and then come up with some recommendations, some comments and...
Maybe so.
I know, I know we've got a lot of information.
To do a little bit more investigation.
I think in terms of trying to plan for it.
Exactly. Voice team, calling, those areas, if he was a little better handling what we could do.
Let's get Jeffrey's opinion. Jeffrey, can you, on getting a more on the ground, you know, kind of reconnaissance to define how connections are currently made at this point and how that might affect how the system ultimately gets designed and...
Well, at this point, to get, I like your idea, broad policies, to get enough direction to get through this ER process in terms of process for the SRF. I think if we can get a few key policy pieces answered, we can get that document to a point that would satisfy, you know, we've got a, we've got a broad planning document for March. And then that next step, which follows, which is, which is the real preliminary design, design stages, then, then I have no problem because that's when we always intended to bring in Kate Fear. Odom is going to be, because they've done so much around the lake. We've worked for the town, the manhole pieces, and I know David's worked a lot with the individual homeowners and helping permit some of these pumping apparatuses and connections. So I think if I get into that design phase, then I, then I think that's the direction we would head. And when we run into some of these situations like the village resort, we know there, the two big ones we already tend to know about, but some of these other key points, Robert and I were talking the other day, we've got Chimney Rock State Park coming in, they're going to be a big user. And how would that, how's that going to get handled? And as we drill down on some of those larger pieces, you know, I think it would be good in the design phase. Does that answer the question?
I think it's timing wise, I think right now we should, we should focus on getting our engineering report submitted, knowing that, acknowledging that this is simply, we're at the concept stage and we, as we go forward, we may find out more information than we have at this stage that would cause us to make revisions or modifications to the plan and possibly to our policies that we've got right now.
So is there simple language that could be added to the report Jeff lead that recognizes that we've got some neighborhood systems, we've got CWS, we've got State Park, we've got Village Resort, we've got Chimney Rock. Something in the general report that says we've got to recognize this is a complex system and there's going to be some tweaks and things that need to be done for each of these areas' systems. So the state recognizes the complexity of this?
We can, it can be, we recognize some of it generally in terms of Roman Ball and Chimney Rock Park already and that, there's some language in there in the, in the low pressure system piece because that's how we got to the costing out, preliminary costing out of those, those connections to those two. And maybe we could, we could put that caveat in there, a general statement, so that Ken Pollak's aware of it, he's our dean or agent that we're working with. But it probably would help just have a blanket general comment in there.
Yeah, basically, overall.
In the overall description of the low pressure system saying, you know, that, just so we get on the record with Ken in that document.
We're going to have a transmittal letter memo email or something and I think that my experience, that's where a lot of times these kinds of issues arise because when you're dealing with a kind of a rigidly structured application, sometimes it's hard to find a place to put it and if you put it there, you can't always bank on who's ever reviewing it, you know, focusing in on that.
Yeah.
It becomes a surprise down the road, you've got to go back through and, oh, it's down here on page 106, you know, that application and it's supposed to be right there in front of your face when we sent it to you.
Is the park a current user?
Non-subordinate.
Would be important to the state, they'd be a part of this, this, they own the park, right? Maybe that would control the system.
But it's not banked.
It's also hard to unput something that's, once you identify any ER, if you want to pull something out, then you have to go through a long process. So the general Robert statement, Robert's shaking on his head because he does, he's the, he is the ER program guru here, he understands all the process of it. But if we could put a blanket in there, statement in there Shannon, I think that would help cover those. And then in a transmittal document, we'd be a very good place for it because it's, it's more of a transmittal and not a piece of the ER. I like that.
Sounds like folks just want to make sure that everyone understands the complexity of the system.
I like that idea a lot. They wanted to consider that, there are funny elements that might not be identified in the ER. We don't want them to, when we get to a spot where we need more money, if that be the case, and this particular issue.
Yeah, I think, and maybe I was reading between the lines yesterday when, particularly when Harlow made the comment about, I understand what we're doing here, we're trying to get funding authorization and so we're not committing to spend this money. We're trying to get funding authorization and we should be more, less conservative, a little more liberal, we can always back down and like he said, just because you authorize doesn't mean you're committed to spend this and that there will be, to this debt service, you only pay what you borrow.
They only pay a little bit of what they want.
So, you know, and that rang with me is that there's my, and then the other side of my big concern, which I voiced yesterday was, you know, we, these are public documents and out in the public sphere, you know, figures that are in there, numbers that are in there could be, could be then misconstrued as binding commitments to this level of spending or these rates or anything else that's in there that may be in there in a, in a conservative, you know, conservatively liberal way. It depends on what side of the table you're on, but, you know, we may have it in there for the, for that reason and it doesn't, it's not, it's not explained and, and it creates a lot of angst and a lot of unnecessary...
Well, besides that, it's totally unknown.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, the fact that they decided they now were willing to include funding for the pump stations, for me it was a big deal. Not necessarily going to do that, just the fact that they knew they would fund them. At least you know that where the money is if you have to borrow it. I mean, it's not like you have to go to some bank and find it.
Well, I, I think there was a lot of good information that came up yesterday, which is important to us deciding on policies because if we didn't know that, you know, that would affect how we might set policies. So with that kind of general discussion in background, can we now kind of move through my, at least my ten and then if you have other things, let's, let's do that. All right, my first policy decision says when we provide service only to existing sewer, sewer system customers, in other words, we're running, I'm on, this came up, yeah, and policy number one.
Yeah, that first one.
I'm on number one. Are we going to run collection out laterals, the practical side of it, are we going to run pipes down streets only where there are existing customers or will we some way, and I don't know how that might be, offer service to potential new customers where we wouldn't have a service in front of their property? And if so, on what criteria or what, or what would be the process that we would go through to decide that? Now, where I was coming in the background of that is in the early stages of looking at the cost of our system, the customer cost of our system, it was pretty clear Jeffrey, that there is, you know, almost some form of a linear relationship between the number of customers and the actual rates we need to pay off the system. In other words, there's a lot of fixed costs in these systems. So the more customers we can bring into the, into the system, the better, the better is going to be the per customer cost, right?
Correct.
So we have an incentive to do that.
But also Jeff talked the other day that we were going to allow what customers we have to get this funding for is what that number, correct me if I'm wrong, but the funding of this project is for the existing customers we have now.
Right.
Now, not to say that we can't have one down here at the far end, that's the existing customer, pick them up, but in terminology, it has to be careful because we can't say we're providing new taps for new customers, correct?
That's correct.
At what point in time would, would that criteria be interpreted? I say that because, you know, we, we're looking, we'll get to that, we're looking at like a five-year rollout until we turn the switch and customers that are going here will end over there. During that time, it seems like we have a golden opportunity to, in a sense, market our system to folks that are not customers in order to bring them onto our existing system. And I think we have capacity to do not to do that. We have plenty of reserve in what we're permitted for at the, at the treatment plant, basically.
Now, remember, the state don't mind if you extend lines, they just won't pay for your extension. So you have to come up with funding somewhere else for that.
And you can even extend in the same process while the guys are in the field, just that's on our dime and not...
You're saying extend it past the last existing customer?
Right. What I'm saying is, let's say between now and whenever we are out there constructing a system, we were to sign up additional customers, would that then be the, the new footprint for, you know, the new footprint for where we could run laterals with the state's funding? You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, so you sign them up now so that the funding becomes...
I'd let them connect now.
Can they connect though? That's going to be the trick.
Can they work? I was talking about the gray area.
I mean, I think if you could somehow get them, get, get the folks signed up and connected and let's say get 50 of them in the next year, we could probably get them truly connected, then, then I think we could get the state to offer. But I, what's going to happen is...
Well, right now in our ER, our maps show the current one.
Right, yeah.
When it goes in, then it would be more or less amended to the ER, you'd have to show your maps where you'd have to have, okay, this, this one we didn't pick up, we accidentally missed or whatever, or it's been added since then. So I mean...
I think they'd do it, but there would be, there would be a cutoff time because at the point of which the design goes in and they, it's actually permitted through, the SRF people permitted, the park unit, which is the, because it's low pressure, it's a special unit of DWQ. So there's two permits and those two entities have to get on board on design. Once that's on board and they're healed in, then they'll look back at the ER and go, okay, all three of these permit documents have to be the same and there's the cutoff, now go bid. So that would be the...
Timing.
Timeline there. Yes, sir.
And you would, now, how would they handle, because I noticed on, on those maps which we generated, that, Shannon, you can help me on this a little bit or... We have collected tap fees for lots...
Yes, looks like it.
Which are not yet developed.
We have.
How does, how does the state look at that?
As far as our lines go, well, not necessarily to Chimney Rock because there's...
That's a great question.
There's like 40 up there that's paid tap fees, but it's not that fine. But we counted all the lots and that's where we ran all the lines.
Very important.
The existing...
So say that again.
The ones that has already paid the taps.
Paid the taps.
That's came from, we included in because individually us at the office didn't know exactly which ones was which.
So we counted it.
So we counted it as an existing customer.
Whether or not they're getting their most of bill, that, that's a customer, maybe they're not, and it, it works well because you are to a large degree a, a community that, that could, you may have second homes and, or that's just an improved lot at this point in time, but, but they're bought into the system.
Yeah, well, there you go.
Also there was some of the system, I started to throw, there's four houses past, I'm the last existing customer, but there's four houses past us that have a sewer line already run to their houses right now, which are part of our system. And if you're the process like that, other line we built was absorbed by the town, then they already have sewer, they already have a capacity anyway.
And that's all of the lots that are...
Well, no, it's four past me and I'm the last one on the street. So if you look at the street and say, here's the last one, there's four more that actually already have a sewer line in front of them. Okay, it's just they're not who does that, that thing with the sewer line.
So by virtue of the fact that they paid the tap fee, they are considered one of the current customers.
Yeah.
So if we went out and offered for all those who wanted to pay tap fee, counted them as customers, could that be added to the ER?
I think so.
I think we can. And I think that getting back to the original, your original questions taken here, inside of this window, so which is, it take, it's about a year process, it's eight to 12 months to get through all permitting agencies, including NCDOT.
Well, we're basically five months from the ER being approved.
Yeah.
Because that's the deadline. So we've got five months under there plus then you've got to go to the end of the design portion.
That's right.
So here's a quick follow-up. If someone pays a tap fee, we send out the mailer that says now's the time to pay your tap, if you're not on it, and they pay it, then we have a record of that and we can give them...
We carry the customer number?
Customer number and we take that off of the cost they would incur if they weren't already tapped.
Well, that's where was the discussion, is how do we, how do we, how do we adjust that?
That's a policy, you know, that's an add-on, that's another part of our policies to how we deal with those customers. Okay, yes, John?
So those people that we've tried to lobby to, to sign up, it's great, I think it's important they don't have to go in and connect because if they have to connect, they're going to pay the connect fee, maybe they're going to pay if somebody come in and connect, it's not going to be connected properly to be able to be in the pressure system. So they're going to get hit both ways there. So the fact that we can count them if they're, if they've signed up, I think is very important.
It's very important.
But if they have to sign up and connect, then we're, we're creating that.
This is a huge problem.
This is kind of a legal question, William. Someone pays a tap fee right now to connect to our current system, we owe them. I mean, they, they get paid a tap fee and that is a guarantee.
It's an obligation.
It's an obligation. So that locks them in legally that service is going to be provided.
It's like I said, give them the customer number.
So the lateral from the new line could be run to there.
Very right.
install as part of the funded loan, right?
And if the tap fee changed for the new system, then they always get credit, what would, one idea was discussed, you getting credit for what they did.
For what they already, you know, by, exactly.
Maybe even a discount if that goes ahead and run that.
I think we've come up with a program and it's not a program like that. I think it's to our best advantage because then we have a customer for life, which really works to reduce our net cost per customer.
Another thing I think we're going to have to consider is new construction.
Yeah?
I'm thinking this process, that's probably a common...
Newer enhancement process. Somebody building a house...
Yeah.
And five years I'm going to have to totally do different what I did and have to be, if I'm not accessible to the sewer.
Well, anybody applying to build now, the town looks at the plans, we, or review the plans needs to take in, in mind, look at the, before you put your, drain everything out here, let's give me another idea.
Well, if there's a place to drain it too.
Right.
It's five years away.
Right. No, I'm saying, knowing it's going to be something different.
They have to keep the line and make it so it can be tapped later.
Yeah, you can go ahead and require them to go ahead and put the pump station in, even though it could not be going to a manhole now, they could order, you just run a new service line up through the main line instead of, basically.
You're going to go into the manhole and just tie into the position of the pump station.
So at some point, it's going to be important for us to have a map of where the sewer line is going to go, the ladders are going to go, so we can do the reviews in a span of period. We're talking about a five-year build out, there's going to be a lot of houses built from now in five years. Brad, Brad's companies to have a map where they can say, okay, this thing is, is going to change the whole sewer system 2023.
And you could require them to go ahead and put the two inch pipe or whatever down to the roadside or somewhere, part of the construction, go ahead and run that line in there and then say, well, you...
Yeah, that, and I'm building a house, that's advantageous because I can roll it into my whole contract price, get it in, be the...
I know where the, where the plumbing needs to come out of my house, that's what I was...
That's what we said, so it's a hand, this could be a pulse saver. I mean, if Sid hands you a retrofit and we put driveways and the lines in...
Down to the head, under, do that, that's a requirement and they get, or the policy in construction, you're part of it in.
We can get the building examining people. Okay, so then based on this discussion, without getting into any nitty gritty detail, very possible unbilled lot is, we, we recognize that we can only run lines that are funded to existing customers, but that we can continue to create our customer base through new construction and through new tap fee commitments during the design process to some point, and at that point, the decision is on our part, do we run additional lines which are not covered under funding to potentially serve other customers in the system? And we may out there ask our engineers for a cost benefit analysis. If we run the line now, how this is going to cost, what are the number of customers on that, potential customers on that line versus if we run it later on, you know, what, what would potentially be the expense of that?
One other thing the sewer system will do is if they're not currently on the town sewer, are going to be on the sewer in the center of period and they have to go accept it, there's a cap on number of bedrooms. And if we set the stage for them to build a low pressure sewer, all of a sudden, the design of the house could change so that they have additional bedrooms, which they pay more taxes, which helps us. I mean, there's a tax base incentive for us to allow it because we're building our tax base by allowing more tent structures.
Exactly right.
Increases the property values.
Exactly right. And I think we're, who we do not have the table right now and who we need to get soon to the table is, is Rumpel and the Carolina Water Services because I can assure you, that is a big issue in the sewer, you know, a lot of those lots don't work. And, or if they do, you know, it's your bedroom house and people go through all sorts of gyrations to get, try to get around that. I think we've got, we would have a lot of lot owners that would welcome the opportunity to get liberated from that and pay a tap fee. Right? So we'll, we'll see as I'm marking. All right, so I think we've covered that one, at least, anybody else have anything? If not, the second one is, is a huge issue. Will the customers or the town be responsible for the purchase, installation, ownership and maintenance of the low pressure grinder pump stations that service their properties? In other words, put the pump sewage into the system. the system. Really loaded up, a complicated situation, right?
Well, just considering my own situation, I have a pump grinder system, I have pros and cons of me being the owner versus the town. And I like what Shannon said yesterday in much that the standard would be, or proposed standard would be for maintenance at all, since everybody would be on the town sewer system, that any customers that had that pump grinder system would go through that town established maintenance system. And I like that. So the maintenance standard is the same for everyone, whether you own the system or the town. They, and I mentioned to Bob this morning over, one thought was, and I understand it, maybe it had been addressed in an earlier UAB meeting, so your pump goes out on a Friday evening late, they don't have a pump on hand, and you can't, and you have to move out of your house for a weekend because you couldn't use the system or something. If the town owns the system, what does that do for liability towards the owner? So that's a negative of the town owning. But, and there are some positives. I understand that there was a plan to have so many pumps in stock and controls and floats and all that. And there's never guaranteed that what's in stock will always be enough, depending on what might have happened, really bad lightning storms and systems get knocked out more than what's in stock. So that needs to be considered too.
I think we'll have to have a, you know, for each customer, if we go this route, we're going to have to have a maintenance agreement. And the maintenance agreement contract is going to state what responsibilities the town will have, and that's reasonable and not happening. And if, and if that becomes, you know, you're on, you said, I got people coming to my vacation rental and I have to get this fixed, and you know, your thing says forty-eight hours, I can go ahead and hire a plumber and come out here and fix it if I want to. I mean, there's no, there would be no prohibition against that.
You want to act of God.
As long as the contract is, you know, is reasonable and stipulates exactly what the town's maintenance system program will provide, right?
Still, we consider what I call the AMCO model, you know, if a pump goes out, we got two on the shelf, bam, put one in, take the pump in, repair it, put it back on the shelf, and go on. It's almost a necessity that we have a standardized program, not only if we own them or whoever owns them, to keep them repaired and keep them running to the same spec and the system. The other consideration was, you always have to remember, like, is it the town liking it or not liking it? Is it the permanent installation system? So you say, from a station point of view, they don't, they don't care who owns it. But as far as they're concerned, you own it, the town owns it, you can say whatever you want, we let that guy buy it. I'm sorry, if your system, if it's to your system, and you're the one responsible, that's what we found out when we set a little system up at the street, you know, the system, our little sewer association is responsible. I mean, I'm glad I made things that we want, we're still responsible.
It sounded like to me that the way, the best way was the town to own and control, but the town, then, is repairing these costs from that customer, any repairs, even if they're some, that cost is going to be covered. And the town, Highlands, for instance, outsourcing repairs to those pumps, so their maintenance guys are not actually doing the work on the pumps. They took them home and they called guys in the private sector to do this. And you may have a visit two to three, and no understanding, and basically supplying the pumps and all your parts. So the town is really a pass-through. We're collecting the money, we're making sure it's not costing us anything additional. As far as the labor goes, we can be at the phone, we call, the companies, contract with the.
The other thing I heard, and that's how it works. The other thing I heard, I was shocked that that was me was, because they do provide the pump station. And how they recover the money, this part of it's a tap fee, part of it's a sure in their rates or something. But in the areas that they had to go in, I can't remember the numbers right now, but maybe somebody else can, like forty houses you had to put a pump system in. And they went and said, who wants to sign on? I mean, they had, almost virtually a hundred percent of the people agreed to hook onto the pump system, because they didn't have, I mean, in his mind, basically because they didn't have to buy the pump system, okay, because they were being provided, they all hooked on. And so, you know, that's a pretty powerful message that, you didn't know where that hurdle is a big, you start following a crazy customers, that might be a big hurdle right there, say, okay, we're providing, you know, who's on, oh yeah, who's on, that's what his experience was.
Well, the issue that I've heard that seems to be a driver in all this, that we get from Brown, is the state has taken the position that they will allow SRF funding to be used, to purchase these stations, under these, under these long-term, possibly under the no interest, we don't know, or if it's not the no interest, it's a very low interest supplemental loan, only if the town owns that particular asset. If we don't own it, even if we have a contract to maintain it, we can't use that funding source for that. That is not to say that we can't go out as a town and procure another source of funds at a different term, at a different interest rate, and offer financing to an owner of that equipment through our system and pay it off through the rate structure. It's just a question of using a favorable form of debt versus maybe one that's not so favorable. And I don't know what the trade-off is, you know, we have to run, we have to run some debt service, right? Capulations offer that to determine, well, you know, what's he done? Just staying under this SRF loan versus if they've been on it, we go out and find the BBNTs, so public finance people will give us a loan against that equipment, or they'll give us a loan for so much money and then let us loan it to the owners of those stations and let them be responsible. I tell you right now, I have a, I see a lot of potential issues in us owning hardware, assets, pipes, pump stations on private property. And one of the things we talked about early on is if the town's going to own that stuff, then we're going to need an easement. We're going to have to have some legal right to go on that private property, and, because our asset's there, right?
I think you have to put that in the maintenance agreement. They have to give access to the facilities that you're, that you've agreed to have maintained.
Now, let me ask, okay, so I, and I think, I'm not saying it can't be done, it's just a little complicated, maybe there's a simple way to do that, but I just, when we were talking early on about every home having one of these pump stations and the town owning them, you know, that, oh my goodness, you know, we're going to have to have all these easements all over the world on private property.
The fact that everybody signed up because they were providing it was, I didn't think that would, that would, you told me that story, I'd have said, well, it never happened, but it actually happened more than once.
So I'll ask this question. So the state, as I understand it, would prefer to have the town, would really prefer to have the town own all of these stations so that they can, you know, somebody's got their arms around the whole thing and the state's, you know, going to finance this and everything else. And I get that. But supposing we don't make it an either-or thing, supposing we say, we've offered this, and say, you know, we'll put that pump station in, and we, you're paying for the rate structure over time, we'll own it, but you know, there's a cost to that. And the cost is going to be woven into your customer rate, because we provided that pump station, right? And we own it and will maintain it. Now, I'm an owner and I say, you know what, I don't want that. I want my own pump station. I'll be responsible for that. Or the association that says that, you know what, I'll be responsible for that. I don't know, I'm just conceptual, the way I look at it, you know, the state's concerned, well, the system's not going to work. The only part of the system that won't work is his or her house that sewage is backing up in, because their pump station doesn't work. Whose responsibility is that?
I think it's going to be a uniform system.
Uniform.
I think it's going to be a uniform system. I think it would be disastrous if everybody doesn't have to have the same, the same equipment. I think it would be.
In mind of that, was the one thing I was thinking. So, okay, we put the new system in and say, I have a certain type of pump, certain horsepower that exceeds the requirement, a tank that exceeds the requirement, alarm system that exceeds the requirement, are you now going to come in and put something of a lesser standard? Because you own the system?
The tank you go through.
It might need to be replaced?
The people we've talked to are basically, anybody who's got an acceptable tank, my understanding.
Currently.
Currently, you could put, you can just swap out the pump. Like, my pump, now I know it won't pump the hill, pump up the hill because it was designed to pump to a manhole. But, so in my system, whatever pump we bought, we'd have to have a new pump that had a new head condition and a new horsepower, but it's going to fit in my tank, it's just forty inches by eight feet deep. So they're going to swap out the pump, what that would do, be electric control, that's the problem, has something to do with the breakers and all. But I think for most, in most cases, you're talking about a pump change out, not muddying the whole system.
But again, if it's a lesser horsepower pump than what I have, that meets the requirement, and my pump fails, am I now going to get one of a lesser degree and lesser horsepower? Because that's what the town is.
You're going to get the one that fits the system.
Their purpose of the system. I understand where you're at. I would go, I get my pump, before it's going to be downgraded and that change over.
I got anybody that's got a high enough pump, I've got anybody that's got a sister deep, all of them are going to be more powerful, in my opinion, because nobody's pumping up a hidden grade.
Well, that's thirteen hundred feet uphill.
Well, if you don't buy it, you might, you might have.
If we don't own every pump, it sounds like you're going to have to at least set standards.
Absolutely.
If you own it, you're going to have to meet these specs.
Well, you're not going to own our system.
Or it's cheap.
But the only way to control that is by the town.
Right.
Exactly.
You don't want to set up a patchwork.
Converge down on them.
The only thing we will have to do is, in these situations, like some set codes or a little cutaway, if it's working, we have to pick a point, and that's what this group needs to do, is say, okay, at what point do we pick it up from one manhole? Everything ahead of that, for now, is under the POAs. So at some point, we've got to establish a policy, say, like this manhole, we're putting in the new pumps and we're pumping here into a low-pressure system. Prior to that, there's going to have to be a separate policy for these little groups and areas, one for maintenance, and then one, when their equipment fails, replacement must be to the new specs.
Well, I think that some of them, I even had to talk to the rest of people saying, Joe, we probably are just at that old, we probably, I can see people busting, but if we ready to just take over the system, we'll just comply with whatever. Because we've got, you know, the fuse system is basically on it right now, both of them, you can swap out the pumps, like, there's plenty of space to pop out the pumps. And the line was designed by David, approved by David, so you would just, about halfway down the road, you would cook on to our pipe right now, and you'd just go on up wherever it goes, and then on. Rather than creating another pump station to pick up these pump stations, just make it part of the system.
And like with this one, they've got six houses on that.
They might need the same thing.
Three houses on it, runs right by, with the, with the five, those people who buy a new line, that way, there's others to tap on.
And those three are on septic tanks, because in between them and Lopes' house on the main channel, and Juni White's, the town never extended the sewer system, and there are no manholes. And that's why these homes are on, are now on that pump system versus the ones still on septic.
Are they going to fall under the current regulation of within two hundred feet of the sewer line?
If the line runs by there.
And be required to go.
Yes. Or if, or if the new line connected at the one end of the last house this way, and then picked up at the other end where the last house is, that way, and then consider that line that's already in there, which is a two-inch pressurized line, which is what you're going to be putting in, and then take ownership of that line, then those three would, then be within that two hundred feet.
The town took ownership of the line.
Yeah, then, then.
And the same score of anybody else?
Yeah, then they'd be within that two hundred feet and be required to connect.
Now with that, Jeff, what do we need to do if the state satisfies them? So here's Exhibit A, what we'll have to be doing in practice, what kind of education do we need to give to the state? Let's just use this one example. What needs to be in the documents to satisfy the state at this point? Because we need to take each one of these clarifications.
Well, to add to that, at the end of the last house, then you've got all the other, you've got a gap of a couple of lots, and then all of those homes go all the way back around the end of Burnt Ridge and to the edge of Village Resort, and they're on the town sewer system from there, so. So somewhere, you'd need to connect the two, that way and this way.
They're existing customers, so we should be able to run, get paid for a line all the way down to the last house.
Let's take them one at a time.
One at a time, that's a great point. I think at this point, keying it back to the ER program, it would be the basis for the funding of the line out to the end of the road, and the number of customers shown on the map in the budget piece, and the policy that's set that you have, within two hundred feet, there are going to be customers. So right now, that's sufficient for us. I think as we move into the next, we're getting into the design piece, and we start looking at some of these larger individual applications with David and Kate Feeder, and we go into the design piece, then we can dive down on those questions, because that may be at the circumstances of X, Y and Z, and Hummerburg Cove may be another one for them. But as far as policy, again, keeping it general, I think, I think.
Is that something we need to write, or do you want to write for the policy? Because I'm understanding the state wants to see something from us, the town, and the policy as part of our system.
We are going, well, it, right now, the plan is, again, we're showing to pick up lines where you have the existing customers, and the policy's in place for that two hundred foot blanket, so that's really big.
That's what we need. The town's outside the state.
That's right. Now, the next, the next, we're going to have.
We've got a bunch of people to satisfy.
It's a bit weird.
Yeah, we start drilling down on the details. But at this stage, you're correct, that would be what we need.
All right, so I think we've just made a very profound policy decision here, really, that's been hanging out there, and it definitely would affect Jeffrey's work, so. Town owns it, that's the way it is, that's the way it's going in, and the loan application.
Agree.
We just need to figure out, it's obvious how it gets paid back over time, it's in the right structure.
Yeah, makes a loan, paying all back, it's the cleanest.
It's a clean. Everybody's kind of participating equally. There isn't, you know, your system had to run longer, your pump was bigger, your, you know, it doesn't make any difference. Everybody gets treated the same.
No, I think if you don't do that, you don't have, I mean, there's, we've got fifty thousand dollars invested, some of it, but some of it is in the way. And, I mean, with the people, we all know that, that's just a throwaway.
You know, somewhere it ran about seven hundred feet of ductile pipe, but it's no longer.
So here's, here's the impact of that policy on maybe the bottom line on the president office. So if we go out, if we say the town's going to own every pump station, and let's say it's, I don't know, lowball, let's say it's five thousand dollars in property, and we go out and we recruit like crazy, and we say, pay your tap now, and we have a rush of two hundred property owners that says, hey, we're going to pay that eleven hundred dollar tap fee now to guarantee that I'll get into the system at the right time. Well, that's another five thousand times two hundred, they're going to have to add in the budget to show the state. So that means that's, that bottom line number goes up, and then our rates go up.
No, and the rates won't go up until we spend the money. We won't spend the money until we do what?
But in the document, the.
In the doc, the document, because it's a general holistic looking at it, so.
All right, yeah, in the document. But then we need to do a rate study, do we lock ourselves into a rate?
No, I think, I, well, no, you don't lock yourself into it.
No.
We really don't lock ourselves into that till, you know, how much, as far as, well, Harlow was saying, how much is.
How much does that spin?
Well, you have to have a rate study. Well, you have to have a rate study, and you have to.
So we have, we have to explain to the public what this document is.
What this means, yeah, really what it means.
And, and we're willing to reserve.
Reserving money and loan in some cases for.
Whether that's five years down the road, the public would be exposed to that new rate.
But one thing that I think, one thing that is going to change in that document is, the, the customer, when we show what the rate is, now we're going to have those additional customers.
Six hundred fifty dollars.
I'm into calculating, which was not in originally.
That's correct.
It wasn't in there.
That's correct.
It's going to help the other way.
Exactly, they're going to get.
So, and see how many, how many different rates we have, there's going to have to be a rate study, otherwise, everyone will be able to justify how we're charging this guy something, this guy something else, because there aren't that many different conditions between Chimney Rock and, there's just a lot of conditions.
Okay, so then, that, this, this decision then makes my policy number three move, or it's irrelevant, since the town owns it, not the customer, will finance it. Now, the next one, number four, is really, we've been talking awful lot about this already, we may have already answered this, will existing customers who have shared connections to the existing system be allowed to connect to the low-pressure system through a shared low-pressure grinder pump station? That's exactly what we've been talking about, and I think we said, yes, yes, but, right, they have to conform to standards.
Well, they can, they can have the opposite response, I mean, Hummerberg Cove could have, could say, okay, we want to keep our little system, and so collecting, we're going to have pump stations pick up over repair and refueling, and so they would be designed out, but they would continue to own their system, their system to get.
In back of that, that.
That gets it to the central pump station.
Is that, is that what we were bringing?
Right.
Behind, behind.
Behind, yeah. But if Sunset Cove said, no, we just want to turn it over to you, and let you just operate the thing, and, and you agreed, the town agreed to take it, then it would, that would be irrelevant, there wouldn't be a new pump system, it would just, each homeowner would have their own system, and they would pump it.
Then each homeowner would have their own system, and I think, and this is a, this is a great question, and I'm glad you brought it up, but, but we, we have talked about it, that there may be some of these larger case-by-case situations, because we know some is going to work, and, and some may be more beneficial to, to say, oh, the town wants to own that entire network of collection, let them get down to a point we can protect.
Why would you allow?
That's right, and it's right now, with this overall general E R document, I don't need to get there quite yet specifically, but this is a great question, when we, when we start going, we're collecting some of these field data points, and we will have to start conversations with these different H M As as to what they really have, how we can connect to it, and what's really the long-term benefit.
The simple answer.
From our perspective, the town, because that's who I'm going to represent.
If the village is one of their gravity, then the town will, will have to negotiate a deal with the villages, in a sense, okay, here's your responsibility relative to your gravity system, because you're connected to us, this is what you've got to show us.
You're going to have to own it.
You have to, you have to own it, you're going to have to, you have to test it for eye and eye, you're going to have to, you know, there's certain requirements that connect your system into a pump station. If you're fine with it, we're fine with it, there's going to have to be an agreement, because we don't want the sewer system.
But then we would own from the lift station.
But we're going to have to have requirement, look at, this, this is like the city of Charlotte does, if you want to connect to that system with not the standard stuff, then you have to sign an agreement that says you comply with these requirements, so, you know, you maintain it, you eye and eye it, you keep the pressure down, all of those.
It reminds me of what we were talking about yesterday, relative to Chimney Rock Village.
Yeah.
In that, what you put in our system, you're going to have to.
Same idea.
And if you're not dealing with eye and eye, and you're just, there's a creek or something running in, you're part of your gravity system, and it ends up in our system, and that drives up our numbers of treatment plant officials, so somehow, that group who owns that little gravity section is going to have to be responsible for those gallons.
Well, first of all, that's going to be a spill into the pump station, it's going to get in the newspaper, and they're going to talk about, the sewer, the pump station that, which was Chimney Rock and Lake River overflowed, because the river got up and the sewer, the pump station couldn't handle flow, that's what happens in Charlotte all the time, and, 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 so that's why, you know, town, for us to let them do that, let them have a single pump station, somebody has to sign up and say, you're, this is, you're responsible, and if these spills occur, you're responsible.
Or, our policy is that we will allow that to occur, we will own from the central collection point forward, and we will establish standards, and hopefully fairly uniform standards, that would apply to any, any customer, like, any group customer, or whatever it is, and, and it would apply to other bulk customers, Harp, it's C W S, Chimney Rock Village.
That might be what they would do, they might want to say, we're on our own, but, okay, we'll comply with those.
John? Let me ask you this, if we're on the ball, you know, most of it comes down to one collection site, now, where, where is that collection site?
Near Legends.
Near the rest of it.
Near the rest of it.
Near Legends. Near Legends, okay. All right, look at the map over here, we've got some manholes on the western side of the lake there.
They're coming in there too.
They're, they're coming in, they're coming in, those are all group, uh, so that's not, uh, we, we don't have anyone from them involved that's coming to our system that's not coming in, uh, through C W S, so.
Correct.
They're, they're, okay.
Even down where.
But don't, don't.
Those last houses are over on Eagles, Eagles Nest, or?
I don't know the answer to that, we've got, we've got three manholes, they seem to be tapped, too, there's a main one by Legends, and there's two other on the, on the western side of the lake, of their, of the lake, I don't know, those.
Little Arkens house is, that's the last house, but I think there's two manholes.
There are.
Around that.
There are, and they come across the lake.
And these maps.
On the left into the, they're going to have to, because that's not going to. Up in resort.
They're going to be disconnected.
They're just going to be disconnected and compact.
So they're going to have to, they're going to have to collect that C W S, have to collect that sewage and run it back up around the cove and suck into that, uh, other manhole. That'll be the central collection point, and then the question is, who's going to own that? Which we'll get to.
Are any of the manholes that we're using now, will they, will we be able to continue these, or we're going to do away with every manhole we've got?
No manhole.
In the, in, in the water, which I think is.
I'm going to see if we decided that town wanted the pumps, distinct engineering, please remember our application, what would you prefer, sorry, we're going to start that process with, with the documentation.
No, no, he's, he's correct, because what, what, that, that was one of our key, we had a couple of key policy points we'd like to hear some direction on, and that's the key, because that will help, that will drive where we put some things, some columns and customer numbers and.
Something the state looks at?
That's correct, the state has been looking at that, and that was one of their questions that Ken has asked me several times.
And we sort of needed to know, and I guess it would be about what Brad said, around two hundred existing houses now.
Potential, potential.
Yeah.
Because we don't have to have that many more.
There could be more, I mean.
Your dad's got the mouse.
Yeah, I mean, we, we actually brought this in case, but I think we're going to use that as a starting point, because that's pretty easy to get into this document for, for larger abuse of the state, downsiding, and then as we go through, find some of these key.
That's what you know in the line, you can't have it, people aren't sewer customers, having, they will become sewer customers.
And then we need to establish a deadline for these taps, whether they can include them in that.
But also need to contact vacant lot owners.
Oh, yes.
And what else?
If, you know, if the line goes ahead, has that vacant lot, they need.
Is it there? If the vacant lot. Cap fees were paid, weren't they? They would be on vacant lots, right? They are on vacant lots.
Well, here's, here's one thing that just, just hit me, that we need to be very careful on, if we send out a blanket letter to every parcel owner, and we say, pay this eleven hundred dollar cap fee, and we'll guarantee that you have low-pressure sewer to your, we've got to set up a district to where it's actually feasible.
I think so.
We can't just sit there about. If we get outside of a certain zone.
Yeah.
That could be, that could be the whole town.
I think it's really that inside of the six.
And we have to define that district, and that's where the miller's.
Yeah, I call it the ball, basically, late on.
What I'd like to, what I'd like to hear maybe is an action item, and this is really back to this, maybe it's at point one, uh, point one, if, if the, if council mayor could maybe give an action item to staff and grounds, and says, hey, you two work together to develop this, uh, this area, who would provide this, that would, well.
We probably ought to have an actual low-pressure sewer zone defined on the map, so, so this is the zone which we're providing.
Well, I think, I think we, we can give you what's been done already, you are the way, you proposed lines over, what we've already done, and you said you're going to draw a district out.
Okay.
Once we have that district, we'll get to you, and then we can look at some of those individual parcel owners and sort.
Yeah, you can come up with three, but you may have a different, maybe there's a different way to do that, you know, that makes more sense to the system.
So, and I didn't mean just to jump back to one, but that would be beneficial, but back to four, which we're on, I did want to make one quick comment, because you talked about, did town make it to develop standards if, if we're going to allow entities to own and maintain their system?
Right.
That's very common, we ran into it, Rob and I did with Bavard Music Center in Bavard, they had their own collection system, which had massive eye and eye problems, so the town came in, put a phone eater at the collection point, said, okay, you're now paying for it, and they figured out, within three or four months.
We got to fix it.
We got to fix it. And then, and then, what happened is, and the state became alerted, so there are standards already, when you tell, an entity says, we want to own and maintain it, then you look at them and go, okay, you realize that you have, there are state standards now, you're required to follow before you get it to, and, and so, so I think that those tools are there in a toolbox already for the state, so you can turn around a rumble ball, Chimney Rock, and say, hey, okay, we're just going to take it, but you're going to pay for it, and there are standards that you need to follow before you get to, so, just as a reminder, it's pretty common, and there are tools to, to get you there.
Okay.
In place.
We will rely on you to bring those tools.
Oh, yeah, well, okay, it's a document like that, but we can do it.
All right, and, and, yes, anything else, I think we, so I think we've covered four, and then, um, five, uh, should new, uh, should new low-pressure collection syst, should the new low-pressure incorporate shared grinder pump stations were feasible to reduce the number and cost of individual customer stations, and so, would, who will own it? Here's where I was getting at, right now, unless there is a defined group, a neighborhood association, which is somehow organically, this thing, who knows, all the, all the spider webs that are out there, will, in terms of trying to optimize or be most cost-effective in this grinder pump station system, it seems to me like, if we had a neighborhood that was sitting up there, and existing and potential new customers, and they don't have any, there's, they're on septic tanks, or they're going to the town system, and it would make sense, maybe it would make sense for them to get together, uh, it would make sense to us if they were together, rather than us buying all those now pump stations for every individual customer, if it made more economic sense, uh, Jeffrey, to bring them together to a central point that we would own, and bring that into our system, should the design be considering situations like that, in order to lower the overall cost of capital costs and hold it out on our system going forward?
Well, I mean, that, that's somewhat of a philosophy, maybe, and opinion, because, so I, I'm in favor of mass from eaters and central collection points, of which beyond that, if they're responsible enough to the state, and they're not sending you, um, sewage that you don't, it's unacceptable, then I, I would be okay with it, and, on a case-by-case basis, Phil's off.
You're not going to find two property owners in this, in anywhere in America that want to be responsible for sewer to a pump system, I mean, we, we, and we had everybody to sign up for the sewer association, we, we'd got, we'd got more documents to get laid on this table, we had had legal documents, we had to have an association, we had to have, I mean, that's what it's going to take, they're going to have to form a sewer association.
Well, I was thinking about us, I mean, supposing, rather than buying, let's say there are ten homes on a street, on a home set, the street runs downhill, runs downhill.
The, the only thing that I can say a little bit, and she there, is your, your pump stations are not going to have the same type of, so when they go down, you're going to have to keep extra leave pumps on them for each individual.
So that would be additional pump, and cost.
Yeah, I mean, so it's, I mean.
Versus buying.
Yeah, that's true. More generic, you know, and it's like, it's like people in common, well, since the well goes out, everybody goes around, who fixes the well, who bridges, and, and, and these things, I, I don't know, I drove a car.
And if you see that, you'd want to like, or a car.
Yeah, this is amazing.
Part of where I was going with that is, a lot of what we've been talking about are these, uh, shared, like, Stephen has, shared pumping systems, but a lot of them are gravity fed.
No, we, we share the lane line.
Lane line, but they're gravity to the.
Well, we, we pump thirteen hundred feet up to a full gravity port, and then it goes down to a.
But I'm, I'm behind the pump now, to the houses that are on, are they?
They're downhill.
So they're all gravity fed into this one.
No, they're all downhill pumping up.
They're all pumping up.
So they're all pumping up to the central station, they're then pumps up to the.
Not through a central station, they each have their own.
Well, they all go into a, just like our system.
Exactly what you're talking about.
Everybody's, everybody's pump is going to put a little, a little push, throw it in, and a pack of something is trying to move.
Well, the scenario, I guess I was getting to, is supposing there's, here's a, here's a little neighborhood on the lake, and there's five houses, and they all go to that manhole right there, they flow by gravity to that manhole.
They're all there.
What would happen if, I mean, would it make any sense, uh, as opposed to now telling those five houses that go down there to one place to gravity, telling them, you know, that a certain day, we're turning off that system, you all have to install your own grinder pumps, and those grinder pumps then are going to pump out the front of your property up, up to the street where our ladder is, or can you continue to use your gravity lines down to a point and install a pump station there, one that pumps up to that.
And that online.
Yeah, it's going to be a different size, you know, than, than a normal ejector station. I'm not advocating, I'm just going to, why did that stuff go on?
It's only gravity.
Well, that's, that's, that's.
They would, no, no.
That's what they have to.
They would just put a ten. Everything comes down to one manhole before it goes in the lake, so you could put your pump station right there, and don't touch anything else.
Firefly Club is an example of which you're talking about.
I guess newer, and, and that's kind of what I answered the question, is somewhat newer, it may, that may be one of the specific cases would come in and say, okay, that may be more good, well, now, it, having built it, do, do, is everyone still an individual sewer customer, they still have to pay the same fees, regardless of the fact that they don't have the one station?
That was the point, is if you can have one pump station and you lose calls, how are you going to charge all the cash?
I think, I, I, I mean, I started, I think we need to cross that bridge, the other thing I would say is, I've looked at a few of these spaghetti networks, a lot of them are running above ground, and PVC pipe that ain't going to last very long, that, they freeze in the winter, the joints spring, that this is a constant maintenance headache for us to go around the lake and, and try to figure out where.
That's what we're getting rid of.
Yeah, so I, I'm just raising it because.
I think Firefly Club, if you have an engineer, state-approved design, that's been maintained, and that was in a certain age, and you can inspect it, then you could, the town could consider, but if it's just something that somebody threw in on their own, it's not eligible to be.
It is not, yeah, I agree with that, yeah, I think that's a good policy.
You know, and I think, you know, having built them, I think.
This is a lot.
I know, about breaking out, it was about eight hundred feet, it broke its thumb all in the house, and it's solid, there is no flow, because it's all gravity, my house right over here in China, can't pass mine, and my dog, it broke, it's solid, I told them, they can put that together, and it's still solid, I don't know how they get any.
John?
Well, one thing you would have there, there's twenty houses.
Well, one thing you would have there, there's 20 houses that comes down.
Right, roughly.
So there's 20 pumps you don't have to buy.
That's correct, it's all gravity.
That's 20, it's all gravity, that's 20 individual pumps you don't have to buy. Then you've got the money for the single station pump to get to the.
I think the town would have to take over Firefly Club sewer system. They have to say, this is, we are going to adopt this sewer system as ours. So the homeowners are just like everybody else. They have the same liability as any other customer has, not to plug up your sewer system, not to throw a bunch of grease in it, not to do whatever all the regulations are. But I think the town's going to have to own Firefly, take over Firefly Club sewer system. Otherwise, they got to go back and form an association to take over the sewer system. Or it's already in the homeowners.
There's a system like that that's, has the ability to be regulated properly.
They can just.
I think we should stay out of it. If we even want that complexity, we don't want to spend, there's not complexity.
Every neighborhood's going to be different, it's going to have different choices. So it requires a specific design, the state of just for that neighborhood.
One more question about that. We've got a system like Firefly. It's all coming down, now you're going to have to have, we're going to have a pump, whether you should not be a pump. And that pump's going to require electricity. And we're going to, I guess that's something that the association would pay for. And also possibly a generator, so when the, we have our frequent power access.
Well, if the pump station belongs to town, we, town.
We have to.
Blows Firefly.
If it wants to, yeah.
But any, any station like that has to have the backup generator.
Yeah, multiple residential being built, even if it's, it could, they make low-pressure pump stations like that. They just have triplex pumps in them or they're still go-ahead pumps. But once you start grabbing more people in that one pump station, you've got to have your own backup generator.
They don't have a generator on site.
Or it's individual home pump stations. All those pumps is going to be, or all the stations is going to be designed to carry one day's flow, which meets your requirements for having that generator.
Right, oh, yes.
So it'd be some cases where we.
So, I mean.
So every generator has to be exercised, it has to be maintained, it has to be kept fueled, it has to be.
Yep.
Routine maintenance.
That's correct.
Here's one I'm going to throw back, just happened to listen about. How about somebody, and this is not me, by the way, somebody that has their pump station inside their house in the basement? What are you going to do on that? The tank, the pump?
Yeah. Well, right.
Where are you getting water from? In the house.
You're talking about a tank overflowing, what you're getting at. What about the, where are you getting water from?
Their whole well.
Hour goes out on the well pump also, then, so you're, you got a business.
Not just power wise, ownership.
Yes. Well, I had, I had two hundred of those, many more, but I'm one of them. We got small, we have small grinder stations inside our house. But they pump up to the big grinder station that pumps into the sewer. And another neighbor has the same thing, all our basements were flooded. So in our case, we all have small plumbing-sized grinder stations. They grind into, in one neighbor's case, it grinds into a septic, a septic system. In my case, it pumps up into the other pump.
Yeah, I got it, but this is the main pump grinder for this house into that same main I'm on.
Is in a house.
It's in the basement of the house, it was built that way and it's not that old, the house was built in 98. So, but the tank and the pump, everything's in the house.
Who approved that?
The county bill department.
Huh? Not a tank.
Where is it pumped to?
It pumps into that main line I'm on.
Well, I'm just asking that question because that's a building code issue more.
Yeah, that's, that line, that would be.
Line of interest.
There's several examples, we use a sub, a sub pump in the house and then pump it down. Not within the house.
Yeah, building code allows certain pieces and that's okay. And then, and then if we go out of building code world into, we could be to the Q world when we start talking about what we're talking about here. So that, you know, I can't answer that question until we understand specifically on site.
Yeah, that's a very unique situation.
What would you want, yeah, what would?
But I just happened to think of that and that's one we need to consider. And there may be others like that.
We'll find a lot of things.
Okay, so I think we kind of answered that question. If I'm reading everybody right, that we, ordinarily, we're not going to be accepting anything into our system that's networked unless it is a, a, a regulated or approved or somehow.
What's engineered it as.
And you have a system that's going to be responsible. Otherwise, all of these, you know, collectively, all of these bootlegged and run all over the, we're not accepting any of that. And, and so individual homeowners that are now participating in those systems are going to have to have in the future a grinder station.
I think the town, the town's position ought to be basically you have to have your system.
Unless you. Unless you.
I don't want to muddy the waters, but that one example is the owner. Oh, the state-engineered, designing system I am on. And it's his system that was designed that allowed it there.
That's interesting.
So.
I would never put my sewer system up there in my house.
But there you go, and that was designed when that house was built.
Well, there's a house on Havener's Point with a manhole in it.
Underneath it.
That's right.
Yep, just say that.
Well, that's really easy to access.
That was for years.
That's true.
Always for.
I did bore up that one. Just drag on the manholes.
Did we ever find out that it's a town-owned manhole? That was never, I think that was.
I don't know.
Being discussed.
I don't know.
Because Rod Malley and David and I had that discussion two years ago.
We just did spoke tests over there, we didn't run anybody out of house.
Yeah, we didn't know it, but I think it's sealed, I think the manhole was actually sealed. And I don't know if it's a town-owned manhole or one that was put in.
And their sewer supposedly drops into that manhole.
Yeah, from the house. And there may be others going off a bit that do also have.
It wasn't all eight quarters. Okay, so let's, I think we've got that one, which is number five. Number six is, will households and businesses that currently use septic tanks or sewage disposal be required to connect to the new low-pressure system if and when service is available to them? Meaning when there's a lateral outside the property that they could connect to. We've run a lateral down there. And within, and that is within some timeframe? Or when their septic tank or drain field fails or needs to be replaced? Or what would be our policy? Now, we spoke, we, we, yesterday, very specifically about the current ordinance that says if there's a sewer available within 200 feet of your property, the town ordinance now says you're supposed to hook up to that system. That's a pretty, that's a pretty black and white and rigid policy. And I guess the question, I'm aware of that, but the question I'm asking is that going to be our policy with everyone? Or are we going to allow some flexibility in there for some other condition?
Well, it's if you're, if you're going to offer the incentive for people to pay tax fees to get included. And, and then we need to say, okay, by such and such a date, then we will be providing that service, which I guess 2023 right now. And what happens if they're, we're guaranteeing them sewer service. If septic tank fails in 2020, they have to go ahead and replace it while they're waiting for that new system to come along. I mean, they would need to understand that kind of thing and our policy would need to say that. Yeah, we're all ready, you pay the tax fees, we're promising you and guaranteeing you that service, sewer service, but not until 2023. Anytime that happens to be clean now, then still you're.
You have to deal with it, yeah.
That would have to be clear.
But let's say it's now, it's 2023, that this particular household hasn't voluntarily elected to.
Pay the tax.
Pay the tax. But they have a septic tank.
Right.
That's working. Are we then going to say, hey, guys, you have to hook up now?
You would, we have one.
You have to hook up, the line's out there in the street.
Before you make a decision about that, I would say that remember that this current ordinance was written under totally different circumstances. It was not going to affect 75% of the property owners in the town. So we need to keep that in mind as we decide, yes, we're going to do that. Because when that was written, for totally different reasons, it wasn't going to affect that many people. If we make that, the rule of policy, and I'm not saying I'm for it or against it. I'm just saying it's got a whole lot different impact than what it, the impact it had whenever it was done.
So, so I would ask Brown, then, to do that analysis, how many properties are we talking about? We stand those labels, we've got them out, that basically shows. We need to understand how many people it's going to end up.
That's kind of everything they want.
I have limited circumstances.
Neighbor that has, I would, we're not the best to speak to him because of this, but. He's gone in and modified.
It's not me.
He's gone in and done work on his septic system without being permitted from anybody. And that's the fact, okay? He's done a lot of work. I would strongly question whether he has an approved septic system operating today. Now, whether he's treating his sewer property or not, you know, it's, they only use it for vacation homes, it's not used very much, it probably isn't a problem. But if anybody lived in that house full-time, I personally doubt it would handle the load of a full-time family in this particular house. The question I have is, what certainty do we have that the septic system people have installed? Or wherever built and done.
Let the health department.
Let, let the health department do it all.
And there's an incentive to get houses around the lake on this that is greater than somebody up in. And not that you want to make a distinction, as, you know, all those things we're having to think through, but there is a handed incentive for the houses around the lake.
Can I ask one question? Sure, if we have that 200-foot incentive, if you're within 200 feet, why isn't there also something that says if you're on the lake? I, I, that's what we're discussing right here.
Yeah, what would be, you know, is there a legitimate environmental consideration that, that will be the determining factor on, on our policy? And, and so how far back from a lake, for example, would, if you're lots on the water?
Let, let me ask, even when we do that, when we say to people who are on the water, it's mandatory, within five years, they have to be on our system versus if they have septic. But anybody around the lake, within 200 feet of the lake, must also be on.
In a reasonable.
Distance, but it's not going to apply to a guy on the hill of 200 feet or, or 300 feet from the house.
Well, that's a wrinkle that I've never thought about, environmental.
Because that's.
Either that or then a reasonable distance or 200 feet or whatever.
Well, here, here's a wrinkle in that, in that when you link it to the infrastructure, the infrastructure is there, they're within 200 feet, they connect. But if we mandate, if you're within, if you're on the lake, if your property joins the lake and the infrastructure's not there, we're saying, no, you have to, you have to connect. To what? That means we're going to have to run the line in it. We run a line down there, it's within 200 feet, then it takes care of itself.
I agree with that.
But if, but if you say, if you're on the lake and you have to connect and we don't have the infrastructure down there, that means we have to provide the infrastructure.
But Kevin, if we can determine if that's going to happen, can we? When we lay out the lines, we can determine whether somebody on the lake isn't going to be within 200 feet.
Well, we need to, that'd be the example, that's what I'm saying, those are the ones we're trying to get off the lake.
Yeah, we need to get them out of this.
I think we need to adopt a policy that, that says, and I'm not advocating, but, yeah, okay, anybody that's within 200 feet of where we run a line, you got to connect by 2023. If we say that, then we can take care of the lake problem ourselves. If we're not willing to say that, if we're, if we're going to give, that's why I asked this, if we're going to give some grace period, saying, you know what, if you, if you just put in a septic tank and you didn't do construction in the last three years, are we going to now make you abandon that system? And, and put in a pump station to go into our system? Or even if you've been there for 10 years and the septic, and the septic tank works just fine, are we going to make you decommission it and tie it to our system? That, that's really the, that's the gist of it.
That's the big question.
Yeah, well, I know that there, that happens at the sanitary district that I do some work for. And they have the same situation. So they had a lot of folks who didn't hook onto the sewer. But they said, okay, you know, you can wait till your septic tank fails, we're fine with that. But you're getting monthly sewer charge. It, it's not a, it's not, it's not for sewer, it's a.
Standby, sir, because you know, yeah, you're coming.
You're coming in and we're going to go to keep my capacity. We're driving capacity, it's out here, we pay for it. So every month, it's just a minimum, but they get the minimum bill.
Well, Kenny, so, so then a lot of people start doing the math. I'm going to go out, I'm going to go ahead and.
I'm going to do a thing in Charlotte, what they did, this is years and years ago, because I'm. When they first ran by, you had one tax fee. And every year, one substantial. Other thing I'd make people aware of, and most people probably don't know this, if the sewer line exists and your septic plant, septic system field goes bad, the health department will not let them fix there. That's, that's not our standard, that's a state standard, you're for it, right? So if a sewer system exists and their septic system fails tomorrow, okay, they can't fix it. So I think if you, that and a lot of other things we're talking about, probably is going to incentivize a lot of people to not wait.
Now, along with this, we do have the ability to, I think we do impose a moratorium on the construction of any new septic tanks after a certain date.
With, with they have sewers that join their feet.
Well, how are moratoriums fair in the state of Ohio now? What are some restrictions placed on moratoriums?
There's times that actually, I just don't know if it would apply to septic. I'm most familiar with situations where it's been a vulnerable contact. The moratorium on houses, I guess.
You said, that's a natural, I bet you can do it that way.
I, I, I think we need to use the environmental aspect. Isn't that the emphasis or part of the emphasis behind the state's conscientiousness? I think we can use that target all the way from progress. And somehow bring them into it. A good example is the shared system at the end of the line, like my 1,300-foot line, over on I'm on. At one end, if you went that way, those three homes that are on septic would be excluded because they're going to be outside the 200-foot mark. So, and they're all three lake pumps. One is a septic tank with no field lines, bottom drain, like mine used to be. Mine was a hand-built block tank, bottom drain, because a lot did not have room for field lines. Another one has field lines under the driveway. So, I mean, you know, these, and that's a paved driveway, that's concreted driveway. So you can't repair them anywhere without tearing them down.
So here's, so here's something for this report, Jeffrey, that may tie in what's been discussed. And that is, if the state is basically saying, your system is in the lake and Rocky Bravo Water Authority is pulling out of that, that, that water system. And that is, there's not a better place for the state to own some extra, extra money than needed to, than to allow us to put lines around this lake to clean it up? Because that's why they're saying we need to do it anyway. So make, make that case, please, go clean the lake up. Because that's why they're saying we're going to do it.
They, they will fund money for felon's septic.
Yeah, they will do that, too.
So if you've got areas that have felon's septic, it's not considered.
The county's necessarily part of the system, which is, I agree.
Yeah, I'm sure that's a wrong thing, and those are things, I mean, even though it's failed.
Well, in every, he, he, he needs the local health department, he needs him to go out to the site. And we like it, but you call him, I go to the site, because we're done up for him, X, Y, Z, and he writes us a little report as a local health official and some.
It's in your mouth, they got one guy in two counties.
Yeah.
People are hiring their own.
They're eight points behind.
And, and that's one thing, as far as going around doing this, trying to figure out where we want to do it. Go through, individually, go through each, each one, just to slake it in that way that you can invest. As far as, the other, if we can, well, policy that says people, lines that join the lake and have to hook up to the sewer system, it's a shame because we're spending a lot of money. it's a shame because we're spending a lot of money to get the sewer out of the lake and keep it clean.
So maybe we have a policy that's pretty blanket, that says if your property's on the lake and you have a septic tank, you've got to decommission that as of 2023 and hook up to our system. If you have a septic tank and you're not on the lake, now what? And you're within 200 feet of our system. But when do you have to show up? When do you have to decommission? That's the next thing to deal with that.
The only, the only thing that I would add is if we mandate that, and we didn't get the money to put the line down there, and we're going to have to run the line down there, and our calls to pick up those folks that we've mandated.
They can't determine that before we, I mean, in the design process, can't determine how many, how much line that is and where it is, because, I mean, you're going to be mapping, you know, you got to map over here, you know where the lines are, and you say, well, I'm not, here's some lines on the lake where I'm not running.
I'm just guessing that because the manholes have been available, you know, to everybody around the lake, aren't you surprised if there are any remaining streets on the lake that don't have existing customers? Will we run a line anyway? We run a line for those existing customers?
So we don't, here's what I'm doing, we know what's going to connect, which ones are not going to connect, and then follow it. How many are.
Unless we get across our code, we're going to have a section, probably more than. They got the manhole stopped here.
I get the economic side of it, you know, the cost impact, but I also get the other side of it where, I mean, the whole basis of this is to get the sewers out of the lake, clean up our treatment process, which discharges into the river downstream of the lake. And I kind of feel like we have some level of obligation as it relates to our existing septic tank owners around the lake. I mean, I don't think we're finishing the job if we don't deal with them, that's my opinion, so.
So, hands, wagon, from that?
Yeah, it improves, and it's going to improve the value of everybody's property. I mean, that's about any money in your pocket right now, but if the guy, the folks that, Steven, that you were talking about down the road from you, I'd be a nervous wreck if that was where I was, depending on for my sewer at my house. I'd be delighted to spend that money and get, and be able to forget about that nonsense.
That's the way I was.
And they're not going to be able to.
That's the way I was in 98, when I connected to that line. I jumped on it as soon as it came up.
The thing I think is, I would say 2025, because when we might have a park and screw it up in the field, I think we need two years after we clean the system to get a time to connect. Time to do everything at once, contractors, if we do the building, it's like. We're not going to have time. 2025, 2026. The contractors, trying to do the ones that want to connect, but I think we need to be two or three years after the system's operational for that deadline.
One thing too, is we have to be careful that our policies in no way limit development, where someone cannot use the property because you don't want to get accused of taking.
Right. So it should have just the opposite, but they should build the tax books.
So are we, I may have got lost in the conversation here, are we talking about properties that are around the lake now?
Yes. Well, I say, that's that discussion, but now the other discussion is, what about the properties that are not on the lake that are 200 feet?
So here's, here's my real life scenario. I purchased a lot in the middle of the resort up on top of the hill, there's not sewer there, okay? I'm going home to build a house sometime this coming year. So I put in septic. Okay? So on that thing, eventually, there was a line that came back around and down that road, back down, not all the way back out, but back down that road. So then, am I going to, after I've gone to the expense, putting in that new sewer system to get me to 2020 septic, going to have to disconnect that and hook up, pay the fee and hook up the line?
That's the question.
That's the question. That's what rubber meets the rubber.
And I'm not on the lake, sir.
And you're not on the lake.
I'm not on the lake, I'm, I don't have any feet, 800, 800.
Would it make sense to have, have requirement that the folks in that situation who aren't on the lake, that they would have, if they've got a state-approved system, that's went through the DHEC and so forth, and it's with, and it's under a 20 years old, if I was far back, and their records don't go back as far as through the line coming. So that's going to, that's going to take care of itself. That.
I'd say before the 90s.
Yeah, but they have, either give them a longer length of time to connect, or you.
Or if their system fails, they have. If the system fails, you can't, you can't replace it, you can't repair it, you got to come in.
There are a lot of people like that that have to, and you don't want anything, you want a damper, you need to hook it while this is going on.
No, no, I think, I think that's a, I think we should have a reasonable policy, and overlaying on that policy would be the next thing, which we aren't sent. There could be people there that said, I don't want a lady to fill the system, you know, it's 15 years old. I just assumed get in on this now, and I'll go ahead and sign up. But they need to do that, hopefully, before it's, before it's on, so we can get it in our system.
That's right.
So I'm in a way trying to push back on that, but I would say yesterday, the talk was that this was one way to increase customers and you amortize the fixed cost by having this policy, because whether it's a backdoor, what you're saying, it goes by your property at 200 feet, we're going to pick up a lot of folks, and rates will go down because it's where there are a large number of people. So as long as we're aware of that.
We can't simplifying the early hookup, you know, all the water across the house, the septic tank, all that much. So if you've got something that's jumping up, a couple thousand dollars a year, or five dollars a year, whatever, it doesn't take many years before you can be on the ship.
It is important that we do, that they do, we do have a policy for each single, because like your building now, what is the policy? Because that's going to fight control, your only system, drainage system inside your house.
See, that particular street, the way the thing was designed, it comes back around and up, what's the street behind you? At the end of the.
Sugar Bush.
Comes up Sugar Bush, then back up that street. Well, on that street, there's only, at the lot that I'm purchasing, there's only one more lot left, and everything else is built out. And there aren't houses. And I would know one of those that's on the sewer system, that because they were on the other side, they were going to go off down again. So, you know, you've got a situation, they smarten even run a line up there.
I don't think Sugar Bush is on.
They're proposed, on the map I saw somewhere, I'm pretty sure they're proposed. So I'm just saying, you know, you get into that situation, is it monetarily feasible or a good idea to run a line somewhere?
The line that's on the map, we took from existing customers to serve every existing. So we didn't add any lines to pick up any new areas, it's just the purpose of getting through that customer that's already on service. So, and it, they all come by the house, how many comes by, and how many new, I mean.
So am I hearing a general consensus that says that we're going to run lines and all folks that have septic tanks that are lakefront property owners are going to have to hook up to our system by, by some point? Yeah, shortly, either by or shortly thereafter, when our system is scheduled to come online?
I'd say 2025.
2025, yeah.
I know somebody write down to me, I see soaps float by my house every time they wash clothes. I know, I know they're not on the good shit.
I'm telling you, guys, there's stuff that's out there.
And as it then relates to other, other non-lakefront property owners, who, where we run a lateral, and their property, and they're on septic tank, and they're within 200 feet of our line, and they have a septic tank, that we're going to set some criteria in terms of age of their system beyond which we will require them to go, below which we will require them to hook up. If they don't do that voluntarily through our incentive program, we will require them to hook up if and when that system fails and has to be replaced. Is that reasonable?
And it's just a.
We just haven't.
It has to be a system, it has to be, you're not certain how there's a record.
We just haven't decided the length of time is.
Can you repeat what you're talking, Jeffrey?
Yeah, so, we are going to now require anyone who's a lakefront property owner to.
Their property touches.
And has a septic tank, to hook up to our system. We're going to have to figure out where those homes are, and we're going to have to run laterals to them. At either at the, and hopefully, we'll get. All the money to do it, if we sign them up as customers.
Remember, at the end of every code, you get somebody to.
Under our incentive program, we give them back, because it's an incentive, a lot of the money. And then, and then those that are not lakefront property owners that are on septic tanks, where we run a lateral, we decide to run a lateral within 200 feet of their property, that they, that they will have to hook up to our system if their septic system is older than some point. Otherwise, they would have to hook up if and when their system fails. If they don't otherwise hook up voluntarily to the system before.
200 feet. They got from the health department.
To, to, otherwise, we're going to assume it's older. If they can't document.
Everybody documents, says this thing is approved by the health department.
And such and such a year, and if you can't do that, then it has to hook up.
But the burden, the policy really needs to place the burden on the homeowner to prove the age of the system.
Yeah, that's.
And then it would also become an oar to your policy that puts the burden on the owner to have a professional, whether health department or someone who does on-site sewer systems, to determine on some annual basis, hey, my system's still functional.
I think that's a reasonable.
Or by annual basis. Because otherwise, who's going to watch and determine, because who's going to know when the systems fail, other than homeowner?
Well, the only, the only way you will ever be able to determine, hey, the system is the date on the permit is issued for the system. In the absence, in the absence of that permit, there's no way you're going to be able to know the date.
The health department's having to come back and check those systems, and it's not.
We're going to have to impose.
And I would tell you from experience, through the BOA, trying to find these permits, some of these homes that came up from variances and stuff, they don't exist. You get beyond that and don't know, don't have a clue.
Well, one way we would know, I mean, not for certain, but if, we would know from the age of the house. It's easy enough to document when the house was built in the last, and assuming the septic system was put in at that time, so.
Well, the other thing you might consider is, and not only is failure, but you might say, I don't know what the useful life of a septic system is, you know, you might say that, you know, it fails or the life, or the effective life of the septic system is past, you have to hook up. There's probably some life.
He says 20 years, except for the standard, so, and that's where it ties into your age of system. If they can prove that it was built within 20 years of maybe that 2025 window.
Then we. 1998.
Okay, and then.
We have records.
But when their system gets over 20 years, then we're going to consider it failure.
I'd still give them a, like, a five-year window, if it's worth it. When your system reaches 20 years, you've got five years left.
To hook in.
There's no way you can do it.
Right, no. No, they want to do it, and they'll come up, they'll, you know, that gives them time to.
When your system reaches 20 years of age, and it starts to clock, it must be replaced within, or tied in within the next five years.
Why are we leaving that to them if the town's going to own the offices?
Because these are sewers that we want to know about, that won't be on the.
Well, no, but, yeah, you've got to put the lateral into them and all that, and run the line.
Well, we have to provide a pump station to them when they decide to come.
Correct.
See, that puts everyone, okay, the line went in, you're on notice, and they may come in and say, I have no idea how old it is, so let me get signed up. So what's the incentive to sign me up?
What's the incentive? We have to cooperate. After a certain date, it's going to cost you this amount for a look-up fee, right?
What about? Richard said earlier that every, every, every year, it increases. You want to get them in early, so every year, you get some sort of.
There ought to be some good examples about around.
It's a graduated step up, the longer you wait, the more you pay.
It's free, it's a good dream. My new home builder, this is my. We should have, we came through.
A tap fee, a few hundred dollars less. Less, less money to tap in now, than the 5,000. It's simply should be upfront.
Charlotte did have a problem. I'm just telling you, you can't even find it.
As a policy matter, and that's all I was getting at, the general direction, we're going to have an incentive program, and we're going to have to have that. We need to define what that is, it'll, it'll.
But what's the real cost of coming in the lake? I mean, when we're building it, we're buying all these pump stations at one time, they're one cost. When you're buying them one at a time, they're another cost. I mean, our real cost difference is between signing up in a period, between now and 2023, and signing up after 2023, when we're shooting, or 25, because the cost of us providing the service to you, even though the line was there, is going to go up. Because now we've got to hire somebody to go put in a pump station, run the line, those are, those are real numbers.
Economic basis.
And there's going to be a lot, that's going to be a lot of money. I mean, sending a guy up there one at a time versus sending, that's, if you're talking about 5,000 dollars now, that's, that's 10,000.
Just throw this, throw this concept out one more time, kind of as an incentive plan, just to let you think about. Again, and it comes from this, the sanitary district in Haywood County, that this sewer, this idea of the sewer fee, it's actually a sewer tax, is what it is. Every parcel gets taxed, the same amount in the district. Whether you're on, if you're on sewer or not sewer, and that, and the reason is that for, because we've had to build capacity in this whole system for everyone in the district, and it's not run everywhere yet, and everyone's paying into it.
Everybody's sharing the cost now.
It's a shared cost, so they have a sewer, they have a sewer tax.
And that's a flat kind of a tax thing, but on top of that, they have utility rates for the customers that are using the system?
That's correct, they do.
That's like the capital fee, Carlo was talking about, basically.
That's what, that's what MSD has, they have, they have capital fee on top. It did, it comes on your, it comes, it shows up on their, on his, on his sewer bill. 300 and some thousand people paying it up there. They do, you know, and so, I mean, that's just food for thought in terms of.
It's still an idea.
They're maybe saying, well, okay, we're, we are, we're putting the infrastructure in up your road, so you are now in the system. Please hook on now, it's free, five years from now, it won't be free, and, and we, but we still have to pay for the cost of the line, so you're getting a monthly sewer minimum.
Whether you're hooked up or not.
Whether you're hooked up or not, and when you hook it up, that goes away, and then you're going to get a sewer bill.
I don't think there's any part of the same, I mean, once, just sit down and, I mean, perfectly true, and round people, well, it should be a tax fee. And these seven things are a tax fee, and you say, okay, if we do it during construction, those seven things cost $5,000. What, if I had to do those one-off, okay, how much is, and I guarantee you, in my experience, it's going to be double by that. If you have to do one-off. I think they defend that in front of anybody, you can say, here, this is the cost of the guy. cost that the guy went by, this is the cost coming back two years later and putting one in, so, I mean, there's all kinds of incentives you can have, that are justified, and they're not like...
I like Jeffrey's idea, and we should, I, we agree, we should look into something like that.
Just know the last, last component part of it.
Jeffrey, the, that sewer tax that you're talking about, does that include people that, maybe live in a place where they know that we'll never put a sewer line up on top of the mountain or something, but they're still in that district?
They, they do.
Pays the sewer...
If you're in there, you're paying for it, even if you're in a spot where everybody knows, well, I, I, there might be...
That's absolutely correct, they do.
I like the school taxes, our kids are bringing them on, but we still pay.
It's very...
But I might have missed something there at the tail, I believe what you said is, once you connect, then that goes away?
No, I, I, that was, I'm just throwing for ideas for y'all to think about.
You were saying they go ahead and bill them, once they run by your property?
Right.
Whether you tie them or not?
Right.
And then, once you connect, you just...
Pay a customer.
Yeah, it's just a regular customer.
Then you're not taxing everybody evenly, these people are now not paying that tax, or others are, and would that pose some kind of legal implications?
You call it a tax, but is it like an availability fee? No, they're, they actually have, but see, they, it's a sanitary district.
They may have special...
They do, so they, they have a, a special authority to provide, have a sewer tax. Now, that, that doesn't, that doesn't say that...
That was something the state legislature gave to them.
Yeah, no, 1956, so, it's pretty old, it was only two of them like it in the state. What, what you would have is more of a, I'm just throwing for...
No, no.
What you potentially have is more like what MSD does, and other folks do, is, okay, you have a, a capacity fee, whether you're hooked up or not.
And when you hook up...
Because that line is there, the line is there, that, we've got to pay for it, hook, you know, and, and I'm just throwing some concepts out there for y'all just to think about, you can throw all this out the window and just say, you know, we're having...
Well, one of, one of the concerns is we do, we have the authority, when you compare us to an MSD or a special district, that's where we refer to Williams saying, well, no, we have the authority to do something like that, maybe a great idea, it may be fair, but we don't have the authority to do it, you can't do it.
Well, we, we talked before about establishing MSD, the lake possibility, and, and this could be the same thing for the environmental impact in sewer, and, and to get rid of all the sewer around and in the lake, to establish that lakefront as an MSD, and those properties that are immediately adjacent to it, and are connected to the lakefront.
I certainly thought, we would have a case to go to the general assembly, we'd need some extra authority.
Yeah.
Because it's so unique.
But can you have an availability fee, if you run the line by there, and it's available, can you have an availability fee?
Well, it is volume politics, you can, you can, you can create special service districts, and...
If you have an availability fee, that would be, because we, we would have sized the plant also, for the fact that it went by your house, and we had this field that you had to hook on, so we, we would have incurred cost for the plant, we would have incurred cost for the line, and you decide not to, and you have the work with septic tank, that's fine, but the fact that it exists, and when your septic field fails, you have it available, okay, and costs us something.
Now, now, really, what John was talking about, is if you have an MSD, of course, that fee would only apply to those within that MSD.
Right.
But to reach somebody up on top of the mountain, like you were talking about, that would probably never connect, you wouldn't be able to charge them an availability fee at all, under that scenario.
No, I was like, I do it different, what I see about the ones where they went, we went by, and they decided not to hook on because they have to put a septic tank, we, we have an availability fee, because we've sized the plant, and we've sized the line for you to eventually hook on when your septic tank fails, and we have an availability fee of $5 a month, just because we've incurred that cost.
So, it's really coming up with the parameters to establish that district, I mean, you certainly could say, you know, you've got some of those 6474 and everything between that and the lake, it makes sense, that's part of the district, but also, on the opposite side, the upper side of 6474, you could say 300 feet beyond the main, and, and that's where the district line is on that side, I don't know.
They've got all the feeder creeks and stuff that go right into the lake.
Yep.
Whole creek, all that's a great one.
And all of this...
Comes right down into the lake.
And all of this is nothing but a, a solution to, to get you around the fact that, that you, you just don't want to require a hook-up immediately, because if you, if you just said, okay, it's there now, you have to hook up, then you don't have to worry about any of this conversation.
Well, I think it's also a, Jeffrey, part of the incentive program, say, doesn't, here, you know, there's a series of couple settings, one of these settings is, one of these settings is, we've provided the capacity, and there's a capacity or availability fee that you have to pay, so here are the incentives, just for, you make your decision, we, we can't tell you what to do, but my concern would be if we made them hook up and they had a septic system, all that, we could end up with a lot of people going to court over something that...
I think that's settled law, though, I mean, that, I think that's settled law, that, that volume politics is our hook-up.
April, you had a question, because Chimmy Rock is here, and I would like them to join the discussion.
I have a question.
Yeah.
The whole premise for this is for conservation and cleaning up our lakes. Now, what Steve just said is that if someone lives halfway up the mountain, they're not 200 feet near the main line, but yet they have a septic tank that leaches, and it's right by a little stream that feeds into the lake, but what's the point of doing all this if we're still going to have that issue?
Right, exactly, that was the point, is that that still happens, so how do we extend that MSD to include that?
It would be like everybody that owns a septic system, would have to have their system tested, approved.
We can, we can define the boundaries of an MSD, however, it makes sense for us to do that, we can run it up there, exclude an area that doesn't make, you know, we're not going to try to regulate them, include the areas we have, we should, we think we should.
If you, if you could say that, you know, if you're contiguous to the lake or any of the tributaries that feed into the lake, that's a definable...
All right, well, I think there's a, you know, I think we all agree, conceptually, we've got direction, we know where we're going to go, there's a lot of different options, we just need to work with you guys and see which one makes the most sense. I assume that whole discussion has a bearing on rate structures down there, what, what's going to be in writing, yeah, right? It's important, yeah. All right, so that brings us to another huge policy issue, and that, and that is, we'll interconnected utility systems, and I identified two of them, there's more, RVR and, and Chimmy Rock Village, CRV, that are currently gravity-connected to the town's system via manholes, will they be required to install new pressure, new low-pressure pump stations to connect to the new low-pressure system, or will the town install receiving pump stations that would pressurize the gravity-fed sewage flow from these interconnected systems? I said yesterday when this came up, that I had a pretty strong opinion about it, and, and it really, it's not, it was influenced by how we treat customers, my opinion was that if we're going to treat our individual customers in a way, that, that we should treat these customers in the same way, and at that point, you know, we had decided who's going to own the pump stations, this morning, we did, that has a bearing on my, my strong feeling about who should own these pump stations, because if we want to control the system and what's coming into it, and, and we've just said, you know, we're willing to, to be responsible for the, all these individual pump stations, I, it would, to me, it would be a difficult argument to say, we're not going to, we're not going to be responsible for those pump stations, but I'm not saying it's not, there wasn't an argument on the other side as well, right?
Well, correct, I mean, I like the idea of, I'm going to put, play one side of it, I like the idea of you owning and maintaining the, the, the pump station, for instance, that...
The master station.
The master station, it gives you control over it, it gives you ability to monitor it, measure flow, and, and then, and then, out of that, you, you really can, over time, you can start with a rate structure for them, but over time, you can, you know, you look at a rate structure for...
Customers out, in the...
Yeah.
Outside of our...
Outside your district, okay, so, so what's the true cost there, well, I've got, I'm going to have larger electrical costs, I've got the INI cost, and, and maintenance cost, operation cost of the pump station, and payback of the pump station, can be written into a rate structure for that...
For that particular customer.
Particular customer.
Which is to be different, perhaps, than it would be for customers that are in town.
That's correct.
Or whatever different.
If you own that pump station, I think it gives you that ability to manage that whole process, it, okay, or you say, or you can say, okay, here's the pipe, now you've got to come to it, and here's the date of which you've got to come, I, I mean, I think you can do that, but you, to serve me, lose all control, and then all of a sudden, they, they, I'm not saying anything bad about Chimmy Rock, so please don't, but, they just delaying, delay, and all of a sudden, the 11th hour shows up, and they go, oh, you know, we got in here, stuff, and then we can't afford it, we've not done anything to accommodate it, and the state of North Carolina comes in and goes, you can't cut them off.
And they will do that.
And the state of North Carolina will come in and say, you can't cut them off and not take their sewer, and then you're stuck with the problems, that's, that's the other extreme, so I'm, I'm just kind of laying that...
And which, up here, well, they have a collection system, they have operators living in it, you only have a collection system in Chimmy Rock.
I think the ownership of Chimmy Rock is, has got to be established as Rutherford County now.
I think so, yeah.
You know, I mean, that's, that's, that's got to be, it's got to be for you guys.
I mean, what we have is, we have customers that are in Chimmy Rock in our, in our system, and, and we have a system that's somewhere here, but there's a connection between those customers and our system that they're not responsible for, and I think we ought to be with them in terms of, if you bring out, exactly, what's the doggone solution here between...
What we have, I mean, the state put the line in, or not state, the county, the county, and so, race gets gravity fed down into your system, and y'all treat it.
Right, yeah.
So, we say, can you...
Now, so we have, you have a choice, you have Chimmy Rock responsible for pumping to you, or Lake Lor having receiving, correct?
Well, it may not be Chimmy Rock, because you may not own that, you don't own that system, that may be the county system, so, yeah, you, you have the alternatives, right, you either pump in or you pump it.
Is there a cost effectiveness, is one a whole lot less expensive than the other?
Yeah, I mean, for, 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 for Lake Lor, for either side, because whoever builds the pump station, that's what, that's a half a million dollar pump station, right, is that, and some points of that.
It's a good estimate, but Chimmy Rock's maybe...
Somebody's going to be paying a half a million bucks on one side of the equation or the other.
So, they're equal, whether or not we have the pumping stations in Chimmy Rock that pump it down to you is equal in the dollar amount to you having a receiving.
To same pump station, yeah, basically the same pump station.
Okay, well, on that note, I'm just throwing this out, is there, I mean, $500,000, we just talked about last night, we've got 50 customers up there.
Okay.
It just means you gotta figure out.
That's what I'm trying to say, is there, is it, are we, is, is Chimmy Rock going to be able to follow on the mercy of the state or some agency or something that's going to help offset some of that cost, so I can tell you right now, there's no way 50 people's going to pay acting, and that, that doesn't count the rates of the future.
No, I think right now, what we're looking at is, is one is the lines will probably have to come out of the river, so we'll probably have a discussion with county, which y'all would be involved in, but I think, correct me if I'm wrong, one, I think the state requires those lines to come out of the rivers, they're going to have to have a new piping system, probably on the street side, which will be, unfortunately, through all that asphalt and pavement, so the county's going to have to be involved in hopefully chipping in because it's their line.
Well, let me, just, did, get to your question about the economics of it.
Yeah, that's what I'm...
So, here's, here's, here's $500,000 and 50 customers, so you divide it up, equals, that's $10,000 a customer, do you know that we're estimate of the cost to connect an individual customer household in Lake Lor, you guys came up with, was six to $10,000 to put in the pump station and the, and the service?
No, no.
So, there's not a lot of difference on a per customer basis, right?
Okay, well, I can't, but each one of those 50 customers, aren't they going to have that same tin, are we going to have to pump it? No, we're not, oh.
No, you'll, you'll just stay the way you are, I mean, it's a big assumption, I don't know that you can't go down in a line.
Except for, except for, the line's going to have to come out of the river.
Yep.
And that's going to be extra.
There'd have to be a pump grinder for the people that are grabbing, able to feed gravity. Like a lot, a lot of businesses along the river would end up doing that.
Regardless, I guess, is there a grant or something we can, because we, we're going to figure out how...
Oh, I know, I know, yeah, I think before we get to a grant, we don't really know, and, and I really think the town of Lake Lor and Chimmy Rock Village need to get together, and let's go find out what's going on here. I think, I mean, keep calling county, it's a system here, it's unregulated, you know, what, what are we going to do about this? The time to do that is now, not in 2020, you know, when the system's, so we need to go do that right now, and I don't know that we have an answer for that.
Well, I did speak with the mayor last night, and he said the sooner the better too, so...
Yeah, let's get together.
Well, I would, I would think that you guys either work with us and come under the umbrella with Brown, or you guys work with someone like Odom or someone else to pull your plan together, you're going to have to have a plan that works for you to get to a point, we'll take it from there, are we going to provide the engineering services for the village, or are they going to do it themselves, I mean, that's...
And where we have, that point's counted, isn't it?
Yeah.
Right now, it's in the project at that connection point, is how we define it.
So, beyond the scope of work, it's going to require a new engineering scope of work, additional meetings.
My gut feel is, we just need the partner of y'all to get it, all of it done and work it in, and then Chimmy Rock pays its...
But the county is a big part of this.
I think this whole discussion that we just had about an MSD would be an interesting overlay on this whole issue.
See, we already have an MSD in Chimmy Rock.
You do?
Yes, I don't want another one particularly.
Is that the CDA, is it?
No, it goes to the town, MSD, it's municipal service district, there's only pay extra taxes.
And somehow they reach out and grab the Esmeralda.
Will.
I'm more than glad, trust me, we're more than glad to participate, but it does, there's, there's a line there, there's all the downtown and then out toward...
Yeah, but we should get the county involved, that's key.
Well, I think, I think that's good, but I think as a policy decision, our, our position, my position is, is that we should let, whatever the system is, rumbling ball, Chimmy Rock Village, that, that, we have to regulate the, the inflow condition to our system, irrespective of who pays for the pump station or who doesn't, the, the, the flow that's coming in there has to be regulated, we can't have an unregulated input to our system, we can't, so, we're going to have to establish standards for that, we're going to have to monitor, the flow has to be monitored, and depending on, you know, which side of the other's going to pay for a pump station, the rate base is going to have to reflect, our rate base is going to have to reflect, you're paying for that, right?
It might be important, I, you know, I'm not sure how much y'all are involved, but this, we may just shut up, I don't know all this, but, you know, our big problem is, we've got so much non-sewage going into our system, that's why, that's the main reason we're having to do this, so, in, in saying that, that's where the controls come in, you know, and it will affect you guys too, that we don't have any filtration of groundwater and river water and all those things, that's why we're having to work so hard to guard against, is not working that thing.
I totally agree, you need to call, call, without that, I'm not saying that we don't want to work.
Well, I understand that, I understand.
Because we go to protect, we all go to protect each other, because it's all brutal together, so, but I think our next meeting should involve someone in the county, because...
I do too.
It's a possibility county says, well, we're not doing it, do they have to answer to the state? Can the county absolve itself from their responsibility, I don't know.
I do too, and Jeffrey makes this point, I think NCDQ needs to be in the paper too, and recognize there's a system here, that appears to be on... and recognize there's a system here that appears to be unregulated, what's the deal on that?
Is the county getting paid for any of that? I mean, are they per se regenerative something?
No.
Because I'm, because, I'm assuming all of us at Chimney Rock are paying Lake Lure, so is the county getting any?
No.
Yeah, not for us.
I know, I'm just saying, now I can see the county going, the county's like, you got everybody's pay to get to this line. If I might, if I might suggest, I think it's actually warrants a separate meeting of nothing but Chimney Rock Council, Lake Lure Council, UAB, and DQ, Rutherford County, and somebody from DQ.
Yeah.
A separate meeting of that.
That's an action.
To discuss just the Chimney Rock situation. Then you may also need a separate meeting to discuss the Rumbling Ball, or CWS, and so on. I don't think we're going to tackle all of the situations in this.
And I think the engineering reports of middle should address that, to say, this is a big issue for us, we've not resolved it, here's generally the policy we have.
And this is generally the way we're going.
And this is, this is how we're looking at it right now, but it may not be the way it gets done.
There's so many technicals there, like, you might have a small, small lot up there, put pump stations. Yeah, I mean, if you've got so much out there, you can't be, Chimney Rock going up to there running the bridge, just mow it up. I don't know, I mean, it's just, it's all.
It's an environmental solution, it's a long-term proper solution. The problem is the responsible party, so right now, you're, Lake Lure is working from your position, that's why we have ended here at Chimney Rock.
Do we need to have the state involved?
Yeah, I think you.
I don't think this DQ from the park's taking.
Oh, it comes in the other direction.
Oh, they're telling us, oh, they're, they're coming in now.
Well, I do think that's another area that we've come in action, I think, we've been trying to get that here to the table about just, it seems like a long time, and now is the time, so that's another action, I, we need to set up a meeting.
Park needs utilities, they want a new entrance, now's the time for us to clear everything up. You want this, we need this, we want sewer.
I hate the thought of more council meetings, but Chimney Rock, we need a special.
Yeah, yes.
Or Rumbling Ball, and then a special meeting to discuss that.
Lake Lure Village Resort.
And, and. But one thing for sure, this impacts every citizen in Lake Lure, Chimney Rock, and it impacts.
State.
Statewide, it impacts tourism, it impacts every resident that lives here on their future value of their properties, and affects the environment, and this is, you just have to do it right, and everybody shares.
And one thing to please bring out too, is this is state mandated, it's not like Lake Lure's gone off on its side to do this. The state has condemned this, it cannot be in the lake anymore, so when you do get questions, is it the state mandated? It has to be done, or there is no option.
Yeah, if you go through many of them, everybody is, we are going to find solutions, they don't go off, the sky's falling, we just haven't got the solution at this moment.
I could think of two bigger infrastructure projects that are for the well-being and for, in support of economic development and the green growth, and that's that dam, and that's that sewer system, and we're having to put the bill for all of.
But here's, this group has to solve it.
What would be in the state would love, we would love for the state to help us maintain those, those two pieces of energy, fund it. Maybe that's a good point.
I'd like the General Assembly, set forth a help as well.
All right, well, I think that's a really good discussion, that we'll just have to, we need to get on it too, I mean, these meetings need to happen sooner than later, probably after the holidays, but sooner than later though, right? January, right? Okay, so the final policy, I think is related to all this, and I guess, will the town and DQ continue to let Rumbling Ball sewage collection system to have sewer lines and manholes in the lake, which have the potential to, of course, substantial, that should be, lake water infiltration to dilute their domestic sewage before it enters the town collection system? I think we've already, I, the answer is, we don't know for sure, because I haven't written a letter, but the answer is if they're not allowing us in there, they're not allowing it in there either, so the answer is no. And, and so, the idea of infiltration, there may be other infiltration, but into the lake water, which is what I was focused on, that's going to go away, that's got to go away.
In the river water, if it's there.
If it's in, yeah, all right, so we know that, so I would say, we can't say anything more than that, okay? So that, those, we've answered the 10, my 10 policy questions, are there any other issues which we have not addressed?
So just pay more.
Well, that's, that's basically.
Are we missing anyone else in Chimney Rock, Rumbling Ball, Lake Lure Village? Is there anybody else, islands, is that, are we missing anybody else?
What about Blue Heron? What was, what did they set up to do up there? Because they had their own water system, is what I'm thinking, and they were all reserved, if I'm not mistaken, they had cap, they have, they have reserve cap fees, right? On all of those lakes.
They go and grab them in the lake.
And the manhole.
So they got to come in our system, because they're already committed to tap them, right?
And when you have.
Then you have them in the system, okay, so that's not.
Yeah, you got to own being built down, they own it.
Yeah. So that our policies would apply to them individually.
Larry, how do you suggest we?
I, I don't know, I mean, we can look through here to see if we've not addressed something that was back, I don't want to go through all these pages, we did that yesterday.
Did you do that yesterday?
Yes, we did, and so, can anyone around the table that listened to that, all that stuff yesterday, identify anything from a policy standpoint, because that's kind of where I want.